...council meeting Tuesday, November fourteenth. To orders, stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is it on? God, our divine spirit, we ask you to look down upon our city, our council, our staff, all the workers here in Port Ritchie, and the residents. We ask you to bless us all, to guide us in the right direction. We ask you to grant us the wisdom to allow our city to grow and still have a small-city atmosphere. We thank thee. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lupo has made it very clear, if you don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, you'll be fired. Okay.
I second that.
Row call Ms. Anville.
Mayor Dale Masson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton. Please let the record show, Councilwoman Britton is absent. Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dimmer.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot. You had to tell me about that. Do I have a motion to approve the council minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Comments from the general public? I figured you would.
Sanders Spolby, 8207 Old Post Road. When is this air condition going to be fixed?
We just...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. We just received our bids now, our price estimates now, so now we can move forward. Until we had those price estimates, we couldn't come to council.
All right. I just wanted to make a complaint.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I thought I was having Manny pause.
This is too bad. I thought there was a...
Is he for the chief or what?
Yes, what?
Okay. Mr. Lupo, please take it.
Yes, ma'am. Sir, sorry. We had a wonderful week last week. We began, for the first time in this city's many, many years of history, we began the dredge site. And to that end, Mr. Hughes, if you would please present our council people with those tokens.
I can't eat it.
Thanks.
This is their first scoop.
Did I get a hand-dug one or did I get one of them?
It's all hand-dug. These are... These jars, these sealed jars are from the first shovel of our dredging project. These are the spoils and they're dated 103117. And there will be a permanent memento, there will be several more placed in the cabinet. But this is the first spoils from the dredging project. And we welcome council to come back and view the site. The project is proceeding marvelously. There are probably about fifty to sixty percent completed on the first part of the dredging. We are now getting ready to move some of the material. We'll be coming back to council to discuss that issue. And we'll be getting ready to prepare our engineering for the other part of the project. I would want to congratulate the city for staying its course, for finally achieving a very important goal, one that we've all aspired to and we hope that it moves in the direction that it is, which is a successful. With respect to this coming holiday season, we generally have a Christmas parade, Christmas event at the Waterfront Park. That event has been scheduled for December eighth. And I'll let Ms. Martinez speak to that issue. Jocelyn?
Yes, as Mr. Lupo mentioned, we're having our annual holiday event at Waterfront Park on Friday, December eighth. It'll be very similar to what we've done in years past. If council members wish, they'll be able to ride on the fire truck, which will depart from the fire station, which will go around the city. And there'll be a caravan of police cars and the fire truck. And then we'll have a Santa at the park, so kids can come and have their picture taken with Santa and we'll give away as many toys as we get this year.
We are continuing to do our brush pickup, even though we only have that one vehicle. We will be doing additional brush pickups this coming week, getting ready for the holidays so that when, if any of our residents have visitors coming, the city will be as bright as it possibly can with as much brush removed as we can possibly move. We have several different issues that will be coming back to council with in the very, very near future, including some new sidewalks and potentially new streets. And the rationale and the impetus behind that will be discussions for council. Other than that, that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Bring it to the council. Comments, thoughts?
When you said they're going to move the spoils, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Do they have to go to another designated site or can that be sent to our low-lying eleven acres?
Well, right now, we're waiting for the tests to come back to determine exactly what is contained in the spoils and that'll determine which specific site. Currently, our contract, our permit, I'm sorry, requires us to bring it to a specific site. But if we determine where there is a need and the material is suitable, we'll then be able to divert from one site to another once we alert our permittees. So we will have that option. But in the interim, as is required in the permit process and documents, we have already prepaid the state for that soil.
So it possibly could be used for fill in our other location where we have...
Yes, sir. Absolutely, Commissioner. Councilman?
I'll add on to that. Will, at a discussion with Mr. Lupo and our engineer, we had to pay for the...
Correct.
...dirt we removed. But if we use it on city sites, there's a chance we can get a refund, if you will. I don't know, don't think they'll give us any money back. That said, Ms. Sorrell, any thoughts?
No, thank you.
Terry?
This was a historic day, I have to say. And if anybody wants to see what liquid gold really looks like, this is it. Congratulations, city and staff and everyone that's been involved in this for 20 years. That was a victory.
This was.
I want to comment, the Christmas decorations are very, very nice. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I might, Vice Mayor, the Christmas decorations that you see outside the building and in the front of the building and behind us are not our usual Christmas fare. Mr. Bill Muse, his wife and his sister-in-law came in all weekend. They purchased and all the material and they worked all weekend as a gracious Christmas gift to the citizens in the city of Port Ritchie. It was a private endeavor as a surprise to us. I wanted to thank them.
Thank you very much.
His talents never end, I tell you. Just a quick question. This last weekend, I guess, I got several calls about some small white posts and rebar being put into the waterway around Sand Pebble. Can you enlighten us on that?
Yes, sir. I sent an email to council with a quick alert. As part of our permit requirements, we had to go out and place markers in specific areas as outlined in our permit that contained special points of interest, star grass or whatever. It was a requirement of the permit, so it was accomplished already.
Thank you.
Anybody who sees any star grass, please remove it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. This is going to be the mayor's Employee Excellence Award of the decade or quarter, whatever. Mr. Chris Hughes. If anyone ever deserved it, you do, sir. God bless you and if everyone works together like that, we'll get there. I think that's all I have. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would the employees, please look at all this money when raise time comes.
Quick question.
Yes, please.
How much more do we have to pay on the pumper truck? Do we have to buy a new one when we get it done?
After this payment, our balance will be $95,337. It'll be done in December 2020.
Wow. Nice work. Okay. All in favor? Did we already vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. Resolution seventeen oh eight, special exception.
I think that...
Okay, please, Mr.
Can you hear me? Is that on? The special exception was made to the Board of Adjustment to place a business in a R2 zoning. Hearing was held before the Board of Adjustment. They approved the special exception with supervisors, conditions, you'll see them there. A reasonable reworking of the swales and six parking spaces, too, which will be in the driveway, so there'll be no on-street parking. The matter needs the city council's approval before you. You have the package, there's a series of questions that are posed to the applicant for determining the standard of whether it gets approved or not, and their responses are there to sort of understand since I don't think, this is first special exception to a council that you've heard probably even back a while. Unlike a variance... Is this microphone working? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Unlike a...
Sorry.
Unlike a variance, the variance is something where the burden is upon the applicant to show, you know, a special hardship, you know, in a certain zoning district, whereas a special exception is something that's allowed in that zoning district. It just needs the approval of the Board of Adjustment in case they want to put supervisors and conditions on it. Okay, so it's got the approval, so they're looking for an approval here. You have questions that you want to call back to the applicant, we can bring the applicant in.
Is there anything from a legal standpoint that you...
I had no legal problems with it and had the full support of staff, all staff members, police, fire, order.
Anyone in the audience like to talk to this?
No.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, resolution seventeen dash oh eight. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review of city waterways ordinance. Mr. Roth, would you like to give us a skeletonized version?
Sure. Carl Roth, 8031 Island Drive, Port Ritchie, on the Port Authority Board, Jennifer Godwin's here as well, and Ron Padova. We had worked on these last fall and what we wanted to do was get back in front of you on this and see if there's something that you guys wanted to move forward with as far as the rewrite on chapter forty-four. We had looked at also parts of chapters ten and chapter twenty as well, but we just moved this one forward first because this was our core focus. So what we did is, in the attached that I believe you have, is a complete rewrite of forty-four. We highlighted anything that was new, anything that was revised, or anything that was deleted. And most things that were deleted were deleted because they were redundant in what we had or with state or federal statutes. So the other thing, from a structural standpoint, we kind of have a municipal declaration of public policy that states what our intention is around the waterways. We essentially leverage some of the goals that are set for the Port Authority Board from the city charter. So those things are in there. They're more in general, but I'm not a hardcore environmentalist, I'm not a hardcore developer, so I think there's a fair amount of latitude in these to do what is highest and best use of the waterways for the city. So that was the intent there. Moving down, one of the other things that we did, we had definitions, and most of this state statutes and such have definitions before you get in the statute. Ours were kind of tucked in before, later in. So we just moved those forward and brought ones that were more up-to-date and current than what we had. And a couple of highlights on things, I know we've had issues with abandoned vessels and things like that, so if a vessel is not kept up to current state of Florida specs, we can consider it derelict vessels and do something about it, much as we do if a vessel or an automobile is at somebody's home. So clarified some of that around that area. Also, around idle speed and slow speed, which is one of my passions, but also seems to be a lot of variation as far as what that means. And I'll highlight on the second page, idle speed there. For most folks, this is pretty clear what it means, but also, an important part of that is the wake component that's at the end. And it really talks about how much wake you can make with idle speed. So those two kind of go together. And then the slow speed area, we tried to get some additional clarification, mostly for our law enforcement folks, so they've got things readily at hand in that area, since that's the key regulatory aspect that we have part of this ordinance. Additionally, one of the things that we struggled with as we were going through this was the fine schedule. So if we've got something in here, who can do something about it? So it was not clear to us, it was hopping back and forth, and it may have been because of the way the ordinance was written over time. So we clarified the uniform fine schedule, so there's a table, and Jocelyn or Erin can probably explain it better than I can, but we highlighted anything that's enforceable there, who can do it under that statute. And that includes anybody designated by the city, and I assume Mr. Lupo would do that. So if he authorizes the chief cook and bottle washer, if you will, to go enforce, then that person would be authorized to enforce under that. And then the other main area here is the uniform boating citations rules that apply to anything on the water, and the chief is well-versed and knowledgeable about that. So we clarified those things. Also, we tried to delete things that were redundancies in other parts of the statutes. For example, section forty-four dash five, cleanliness of docks. We have something there and there's something in the code enforcement area as well. We figured that was a land-based thing, don't have it in two places, we just left it over there. So you'll see that type of thing you should go through. Also, one of the things I wanted to highlight on forty-four dash forty, section C, which is on page six, it's at the top of the page, says any law enforcement officer can, who observes a violation, can cite that person by U.S. mail. So if we're, if our boat's down or somebody can't get to something, it's nice to know that you can go ahead and do that, and you don't have to chase them down necessarily on the water. Section forty-four one and forty-four two, what we look to do is harmonize our ordinances with both state and federal levels, so there's no confusion there. You don't have to articulate everything through our ordinance because it's already there at the federal and state level, so we just harmonize that, so I wanted to highlight that to you. And also, something I thought was important, particularly we had a flooding crisis here in the last couple of years, forty-four seventy-one D, which is on the page seven, about the middle. Essentially, what this says, it empowers the council to put an emergency ordinance in place to prevent any wakes on city streets. That, so if a street's flooded and a big, high four-wheel drive comes blasting through and starts washing away things, it would be nice for most residents, since we're a low-lying community, to be able to have those protections in place and allow our law enforcement to do something about it. So for example, if we have a hurricane situation that's announced, it looks like it's coming in this area, council at their meeting can go ahead and say, we want to put this in force on the streets of Port Ritchie to help protect the residents and make sure we don't have riffraff cruising through at high speed, which we've seen at least in our neck of the woods. And then lastly, just for clarification, forty-four seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-five are really the meat of the ordinance that talks about idle speed where it applies, slow speed where it applies, the speed zone that we have in Miller's Bayou, and then the Olsoner Park swim zone. So that's the meat there. So I just wanted to highlight those briefly to give you a quick overview and then open up any discussion you have or questions.
Anyone have enough knowledge to have a question?
Well, I actually spent the whole day with this.
I am glad you're here.
I mean, I know more about it than I ever wanted to, believe me. I think you did a fabulous job because I could see where it needed to be, the wording needed to be changed, and where some things needed to be disposed of because we had duplicate stuff elsewhere. So I actually read through the whole thing and compared it to the other one. So, yeah, I approve of it. I think it's very good.
Thank you.
I know you worked very, really hard and we really do appreciate that. And I wish you'd go to Tallahassee and do the same thing with the entire...
There's two I'd like to work on.
Will, Terry?
It was a good job. I've read through this whole thing and I'm sure it's been coordinated, so we're not overreaching anywhere or breaking anybody's special rules, so I know you're very thorough about that. So I have no qualms about this. And I think it's high time that, you know, being that we have this much waterfront, we really need, as much as we concentrate with speeders and everything else on the street, these things need to be enacted and they have to be clear and they have to be concise. And I think you did an excellent job in that.
Now, Carl, I understood you say that if a police officer observes speeding, he can take their Florida plates, is that correct?
Well, we have that in the ordinance. I would have to defer to the chief or Jim around that piece. That was something we carried forward that was in there. We probably brushed it up a little bit, but I don't know if that's an ability that we naturally have in the state of Florida, but it was something that we had authorized at some point in the history of Port Ritchie. So that's why we left it there and, like I said, bumped it up a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, excellent piece of work, sir. At this juncture, I would appreciate if this document were forwarded to staff so that staff, building department, legal, and the rest of us can get our heads wrapped around it to make sure that we feel extremely comfortable, so that we can come back to you with recommendations for it, concerning it, about it, at a very, very near-future date. So we would like you to refer it to us so that we can finish the hard work that they've already put into it and bring it back to you.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I would like the chief to look into this pushing wake, however we've defined it. There's a couple, there's a lady out at Sand Pebble that lost her dock when the Sun Cruise goes by. We've had a, I've had a talk with Sun Cruise people who are great, they're good citizens. They, there does appear to be one captain that pushes the limit, and she lost her $10,000 floating dock. And if we can red light system, whatever it is, and I'm sure Jim will shoot holes in my legal abilities, but some way slow some of these people down, particularly in the winter. So if, I would like to have a motion to put this to staff at time certain to be brought back.
Okay, I'll make that motion, get sent to staff for consideration and suggestions.
Give me a time certain return.
Return...
Within our...
As soon as possible.
Within our terms. As soon as we complete our work. Sure. Okay.
Second.
What timeframe do you put on that?
As soon as we complete the review.
Within all of our terms, at least.
This is substantial input for me.
Really?
Yes, there's probably some good ideas there, sure there are, but there's major substantial issues that I need to inform council on.
Right.
Very serious matters.
Well, do you think second week of January would be appropriate or not?
I'll do the best I can. I'll give you memos every week on each item, some very serious matters.
Right. As soon as we complete our work.
Make sure they get forwarded to the Port Authority so they can stay abreast.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion with a floating time certain and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I should have taken it to the public.
Thank you.
I apologize. Did you have anything to say?
No.
He did a dad-gum good job. Carl has always done good jobs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With respect to item number four, the discussion of the boathouse, this issue was originally brought to council by Councilwoman Britton. Unfortunately, she's ill, and at that time, we delayed it the last time because of the absence of two other council people. We would like you to please defer this until our next meeting when Councilwoman Britton is present. We have her presentation ready, but if it would meet your, with your approval. Defer?
Motion to table till item four till next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, we're moving right along. Agenda item number five, surplus of brush truck. Would you like to take that? Or Jim?
It's not my surplus equipment?
No.
Who's the player's surplus? Public work?
The public work.
There you go.
Now, I just need this for my clarification. When we go surplus, that means it goes somewhere and we get something back and we don't really have...
Yes. It goes to the auction and after the auction, the funds are returned to the general fund for future disbursement by council.
But how do we have any follow-up of whether we got a reasonable number for this?
The equipment going to the auction is, is pretty sad. Like, the only way I can describe it is, is almost going to have to be dragged there. It's on, what, seven cylinders and falling apart? So whatever we get, we'll be very happy to receive. I'm trying to be as polite as I can about it. But it'll go through the public auction process, and any funds that come back, will come back, will allow, will alert council to those funds. But generally, if we're going to send it to public auction, it means that there's absolutely no value left for the city other than, than whatever we can get for it.
Now, and Chris, with 52,000 miles, this motor would not seem to be out of order and, or has it had a lot of problems?
Well, the truck is, the truck is 16 years old. Just to give you an idea of what these trucks go through, our brush truck currently is a 2014. It has 2,075 hours on this truck. It has two thousand and seventy-five hours on this truck. It gets driven once a month, at the most, twice. Our regular work trucks that are driven daily, same year, has two thousand and fifty-six hours on it. So, this brush truck has more hours on it than our regular driven trucks daily.
Have you had?
So, the wear and tear on these, these brush trucks is more than what you.
Have you had a lot of?
You have to imagine, it's, it's short mileage, but the engine has to lift that bed, the weight of that load. So, you're putting strain on the motor as well. If you'd like, I can also show you. I have pictures that I can give each of you. Yeah.
I just try to be as cheap with the city money as I am with mine. This is what we pick up.
No, sir. What you're looking at in Crystal Amplify is the base of this truck, just rusted out.
That's actually the bed of the truck. And if you look at the last picture, if you look in detail, there's three steel plates welded in the back of the truck. The floor is already rotted through. We've had to weld plates in the base of that, the bed of the truck to even haul brush, besides the frame damage that it has.
Okay. Well, I, we've already gone through this, but Mr. Lupo, I am very unhappy with the way we treat impounds and surpluses. And I know I'll keep bothering you until somebody, whether it's one of the locals, Bill Grueguar, I considered or sent to you. There's got to be a better, everybody says, "Well, the way they're doing it, they just take them over to Tampa and there's no charge to us." That's, does not happen in my world. If you haul cars to Tampa, it costs somebody. And I, and because your predecessor couldn't look out his back window, doesn't mean we can't have an auction right back there.
I, I can certainly tell you that we'll look back into the situation with respect to surplus vehicles and come back to council with a recommendation. But where we're stuck right now, we're ready to surplus this and the other two vehicles. But I certainly will go back and, and we'll come back with some other issues. I've spoken with Mr., with several individuals concerning this. There are other alternatives, but I would rather bring it back to council for council's consideration. If you're, and I'll come back with some numbers with specifically concerning these items so you'll have a feel for what, what their value may be versus what it could be if we do a different form. I'll be more than happy to do that.
I'd just like to, you know, announce it, that we are looking for someone to come up with a better solution, and if anybody wants to come to Mr. Lupo, please do.
It's fine.
We are at purchasing a brush truck.
But could you please approve this motion, sir?
Did we not?
No, we did. Motion to approve the surplus brush truck. Second.
Motion approved. Anyone in this audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, where are we at?
Purchase of the truck.
Brush truck, new purchase. Okay, staff recommends purchase of a brush truck. There are no numbers on this. Recommends approval of the cost proposal from Duval Ford for the purchase of a two thousand seventeen Ford F-550 utility truck with a dump body at a total cost of forty-six thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents for the Public Works Department. Remind says it all.
Yes, this, this cost is approximately five thousand, four, five thousand dollars less than the truck that was originally purchased. This is the proper truck. That truck was purchased three or four years ago, and this is the proper truck that should have been purchased all along. It is less than the one that was purchased some years ago and will certainly serve us for many years to come, and is absolutely essential that we get it as quickly as possible. We've used the state process, piggyback system to get the best possible price through the state bids. We've checked with three different counties, four different municipalities, and this is the most logical and proper way to obtain, at a most reasonable price, the exact requirements as spelled out in those state and piggyback documents. So, we would request that council approve the suspender, which was budgeted and approved during the budget process.
Do I have a motion? To approve surplus of two Public Works utilities?
No, the motion to approve the purchase of a brush truck.
I'm sorry, we went by that one. Okay.
I'll give it a second for discussion.
Okay.
We tabled this last meeting because we thought you should be here for this.
Yeah, I saw that.
There were some questions about the truck and the price and piggybacking and all these things, and whether we should go out the bed and all those things were kind of kicked The only problem I've had with this, after some discussion with people from other cities and that, is the fact that we're using a four-wheel drive in an area that I don't see any reason we need four-wheel drive. And I understand there is a substantial savings if you use two-wheel drive. So, I'm looking to get some defense from you on why you need a four-wheel drive, so I can explain that to the citizens, what paying for this.
If you, I don't know if you bent out to our brush pile at the end of Leo Kid. All that brush debris sits there for up to eight months at a time. That material decomposes with the rain, gets wet. We've had to pull four-wheel drives out of the brush pile. We've had to take our loader out and pull them out. Without four-wheel drive, there's no way that we could back up into the brush pile and be able to dump and pull out. I'd spend all day with the loader out there pulling a two-wheel drive truck out. I've been stuck out there in my own work truck that has no four-wheel drive.
It's a good enough reason for me.
Any other comments? I will say that when you need, you don't need four-wheel drive until you need it. Anyone?
Can I ask a question? When you are looking at these trucks that the state provides for us to purchase, we don't get the custom order, do we?
Just, just the opposite. That, there's a, a, we put together what we feel is the basics that we need, and then we go against the state list and compare what is out there on the state list. And we, you can pick item A, item B, item C from the state list. You can't do that with a, with any other mechanism. So, we custom tailor the vehicle for our needs at the cheapest price of the item on the state list.
But it's already, the, the truck is already made that way, and this is what we have available to us to purchase?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, four-wheel drive's a bonus.
Well, just to make a comment, any of the, we, we didn't, these are bare bones minimum trucks that we're getting. The only option that we added were safety lights and power windows and locks. It's a little difficult nowadays to stop, slide across, all the way across the bench seat, and roll down a window and try to communicate with other workers. Power windows and locks is kind of a necessity nowadays. But that's it. Vinyl seats, rubber floors.
So, you could ask for that?
We can ask for more options.
Or that was just what was offered to us?
We could get more options besides that if we wanted. It's on the state contract list. They have options that you can add to the vehicle, but it costs more. We purchased a bare bones minimum, four-wheel drive, dump body, safety lights, and power windows and locks. That is it.
So, they have a truck that fits our needs, and it just happens to have a couple of extra bells and whistles?
The only thing it has is power windows and locks. That's the only extra we're getting.
And heated seats during the summer?
No heated seats.
We have a motion on the side.
Want to go out to public?
Public. You're the public.
Sanders School, the eighty-two oh seven Old Post Road. Fifty-two thousand miles seems as though it's very little mileage, and it is. But how big is our city? It's not the mileage that we use on the trucks, it's the work it does. So, for me, I think we really need another truck, especially that we've had so many storms and hurricanes, and our truck has really gone down to the bare truck. So, you know, I think this is a good investment that we're making for the city, and the city needs it. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we voted?
Yeah.
We voted, we're done.
All in favor?
We'll wait that one.
It's fine.
All in favor, I think? We have a motion and a second on it, right?
We have voted?
No, you haven't voted yet.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keep thinking there's a way to get trucks for no money, but it just doesn't pop up. Think we are at the end of, we are in this old business.
Next page.
No, we don't.
No, we have, we have the other two vehicles. Same or seven?
This is more?
Yes, sir.
Seven.
Okay. Do we have enough employees to hire somebody to rob these vehicles? Or do we have enough?
Going to surplus two and acquire two, sir.
Okay. Go, you want to go ahead?
Yes. Surplus two Public Works Utility Department trucks. These trucks are, are the oldest. Chris, you want to speak both of them? They're the oldest in the fleet?
Actually, one is a utility vehicle and one is Public Works.
Okay.
They're both fourteen years old. One has a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-one miles on it. No heat, no air conditioning. It's, it's unsafe to drive. The other one, the odometer quit in two, well, before, I came back in two thousand and eleven. The odometer wasn't working when I took over as foreman. I had the odometer repaired in two thousand and fourteen. So, in less than, well, right around three years, we, we averaged ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-five miles per year on this truck. So, actuality, this truck should have a hundred and forty-one thousand miles on it. These trucks are fourteen years old. Neither one of them have heat, air conditioning. They're worn out. I, and you asked the question about hiring people. I'm already doubling up guys and trucks because I don't have the trucks that are safe to drive. I could get more work done.
Do we have a maintenance schedule on these? I noticed a lot of rust and...
Yeah, I have a fleet maintenance program that goes by mileage, and anytime it gets to a certain mileage or hours, it pops up a red flag on my fleet maintenance program. These things get, they have a checklist when they go in for service. They do a complete inspection of the vehicle, safety inspection.
That's both mileage and hours?
Yes, sir. The newer trucks have hours. These older trucks didn't have an hour meter on them. So, there's no way to track the hours on the older trucks.
All right. So, we're doing our best to keep this maintained, but you might just have the nice employees say, "Jeez, this isn't a mileage or another problem, but it's rusting through this cap. Maybe we should just do this until it pops up."
Well, when I first started here in two thousand and six, we did not have any kind of program to get any kind of underbody wash done on these vehicles. So, these vehicles are driving through flooded water, saltwater. They now are washed once a month. They go through a car wash with an underbody wash. These vehicles are maintained, and I have records.
Is, when we purchased them, do they have an underbody coating?
They do not come with an underbody coating. If you'd like to get that, it would cost more.
How much?
I'm not sure. I could check into that.
I used to do my hunting, like that.
There is a company that we've had some vehicles where we had the spray put in the bed of the truck instead of bed liners to keep them from rusting because they throw their tools, shovels, things of that nature in them. I think the last time we had it done, it was right around five hundred dollars to do that, on the inside of the bed.
Just the bed.
I don't know what it would cost.
On the inside?
Of the bed.
Well, if you have anybody...
I can check underneath.
Right. Five hundred dollars is kind of ridiculous, but if somebody crawls under there, like Mr. Muse crawled under that pier over there, there's spray cans of undercoating, and you can undercoat the dang. It's just a matter, no, he won't, he, he's not in charge of doing that, right? But, you know, just taking care of what the city's providing, and just that extra care. Maybe it's going to cost fifty dollars worth of spray cans, and, oh my God, somebody might get it in their face or something. Tell me what the problem is.
Mayor, if I might. This is something that we are addressing the first time this year. We made allocations for it in our budget that you approved. And I must say in all honesty that this community has had a terrible record of, of failure to maintain its property, its facilities, and its equipment. And I don't say that lightly. You, you'll find that when we brought the budget to you, that we included in it proper line items for repair of facilities, replacement of facilities, upkeep and maintenance of facilities, because it's that maintenance of, of facilities, vehicles, that gives it longevity. Both that and the, and the attention of the supervisors and the people who run these, this equipment to detail. We are on it now. This, you're, you have made it very clear to us during the budget process that you are concerned about these items, and I wish to assure you that we are on the maintenance programs, and we are on the modernization and repair of our facilities throughout the city. This building is example of what should be done and what must be done, and it will be done. You, you, we've prepared for it in the budget, you've approved it, and shortly we'll be coming to you to do the repairs that are necessary to maintain this facility. It hasn't been painted since it was built. Well, it's going to be painted this coming year if you approve it because it's budgeted.
How much is budgeted for painting?
Approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, if I can recall.
Okay, we are back to old business?
No.
Nope.
We aren't done with it? More trucks?
Sir, you have to prove this one, yes, sir.
I thought we did.
Motion to have to surplus this. I'll make the motion to surplus the two Public Works vehicles. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any more hidden truck pages?
No, the next one, sir. And that is the replacement of the two vehicles you just surplus.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to purchase two Public Works Utility Department trucks.
Second, and I hope we get fourteen years out of these.
Yeah.
I do, too. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are on to old business finally. Back to the future, Ms. Soral.
Yeah. All right. We spoke about the grant funds at the last meeting. Have we gone any further with that with the staff to try and make those available to some of our residents?
We're trying to put together a special program. Again, it has to be limited. We talked about a fifty thousand dollar allocation for a CDVG type of grant, at fifty grants at one, at approximately one thousand dollars. We're still trying to put the actual finishing touches on, on that to come back to you. That, and we're trying to solicit some additional grants that are out there. But a lot of the grant funds have evaporated because of the recent problems here in Florida and across the country, Puerto Rico, et cetera. So, we're relying on the funds that we have to try and put a, a, a small but meaningful grant project together. We will be back to you before the year is out or in the very beginning of January with a program for your consideration.
Excellent. I'm sure that the residents will be happy to hear that. A thousand dollars is helpful.
Absolutely.
And fifty people in the city, that's wonderful. That'd be great. Okay, on the NICSOL communications, are we still working on that?
Yep. We just completed our training. We had three weeks of training that we had to go through, and we'll be rolling it out as, as soon as we can figure out the inner workings of how we're going to administer. as, as soon as we can figure out the inner workings of how we're going to administer, and who's going to have access to it, so, we're still working on that. But we hope to have it up and running to be able to advertise for our holiday event. So, that, that's my goal.
Hey, that's great. How are we going to get that communication out to our residents that we have this available to them?
They, they gave us, the NICSOL company gave us a lot of information that we can advertise the program to help people get connected. We'll use Facebook, we'll check with the utilities department to see if we can maybe advertise on the sale. Yeah.
Okay, I do have, since we were talking about the complications with the Port Authority, with the changes that are being made, is that, can we talk about the process of what it takes to change code and charter, and what it costs the city, so that, because I know we've talked about having a citizens committee for charter changes and revisions, we really need to know what this is going to entail, because I know that Mr. Roth has put a tremendous amount of work into this.
Yes.
The one, and we still have months of it ahead of us, so, we really need to know if we're going to put together a citizens committee to make changes in charter and code, what we are actually up against.
That too.
A lot of questions there. Try to address them. For free to ask me additional questions, Councilwoman.
Just sum up.
Well, it's, well, there's several different subjects here, regretfully. I'll start with this. Every ten years, we do a review of all of our ordinances pursuant to our charter, a ten-year review. What they, that's now due in two thousand and eight, just recently, by coincidence, that's why this is sitting on my desk. We have to do a full code review, okay? And the way that's done is Munich Code does that for us, they're the biggest in the country, they do it in probably almost all fifty states. I did the last one, believe it or not, that's sitting here. This is the work product for just the code, okay? The land code's bigger, this is about six hundred pages. Takes me about a year. I'll be starting this in January. They're going to teleconference at this time, okay, as opposed to live meetings with their lawyers. They look at the code, they have people that are just in Florida, two lawyers are assigned just to us, and they do this for all the cities, not just us. Costs a few dollars, and they go over every single reference in every single code, okay? And state legislature passes laws, administrative departments pass laws, to see if we're still matching up, and there's no, nothing that's superfluous or contradictory. They bring that to me, we sit down, I tell them, you know, well, this is what I'd like to do, get around that, this way. I think in this code, last time, it was about a hundred and sixty minor little changes, some typos, things like that, sit down with them, so, we'll be starting that. Now, that doesn't include the charter, okay? That's what we do with the code. And the ten-year review starts, probably started in, convinced in January, February, I requested a proposal for what it'll cost us, so, we'll start that in January. So, we're doing a full code review, and that includes everything, including the waterways ordinances that was done, that's actually part of it, there's thirty pages of what's here. And so, that, that's being done. If it got to the charter, that's just, doesn't get reviewed unless you want to. If there's some reason you'd want to change the charter, or look at the charter, something like that, that's a policy decision, not a legal decision. In terms of, I think Councilwoman Sorel, your other comment, there's state law, see, I don't want to use the word normal, but generally, if you want to change a whole code section, what you would do is, you'd sit down with whoever wants to change it, and say, what's the problem? What would you like to see changed, okay? And then the city attorney now would then say, okay, well, here's the verbiage and what we're going to change, and he would put the thing together. Once you put it together, where, you know, reverse engineering something, you can't, like this, all this work here, and I've read some, but it's actually pretty good, but you can't do it that way. You can't, you have this rules by the state law, how you delete something, or amend something, replace something, it has to be done a certain way. And leaving that aside, there's certain major understandings that I'm going to be sending you memos on, okay? First of all, code enforcement. Code enforcement is separate and distinct from state law, okay? It's, it's something else you can do, it's another knife in your drawer. So, to eliminate a lot of sections, say, well, that's in the state code, is, well, we know it's in the state code, so, you've noticed that it was the same, we know it's the same, it's supposed to be the same. Chief, we discussed this last week, knowing this is on your agenda, how many people have you cited on the codes since you've been here? On the waterways? Correct. And, but you can. Now, you can cite, because you have all the powers of Florida Fish Game and Life, except for two areas, you can't cite anybody for a fish out of season, so, if you get a snook in the city Philadelphia, he can't hurt you, a lot of that going around, and one or two other little things. Funny, right? And the, the state, if you charge it with the uniform traffic citation, explain the process and how that's different, explain that process.
The state, the uniform citation, that's a state, under a state, it's either a misdemeanor, misdemeanor or felony, where the code violations are a local, it's a local ordinance, a local code.
Yes, so, in other words, what, in a code violation, so, let's say it was just something minor, he can just go over and warn them, and anybody can be the code enforcement officer, police, as well as anybody designated, I think Mr. Roth was saying that, by the city manager.
Correct.
Can issue that citation, and then every month, they're prosecuted by me at a set time, nine o'clock on Thursday, which is this Thursday. I don't need witnesses, okay? Rarely does anybody put it to trial, if they do, we know the date in advance. That scenario is we lose control of the timing. Police officers have to go down there, okay, if he's going to cite it, or code enforcement can't cite the uniform traffic citation, only you can because you're a sworn officer. So, you've now limited all of your enforcement to him. I can do code enforcement over here, okay? So, you've taken, this proposal is eliminating that fact, okay? When, even though we don't do it, why do you want to get rid of it, in case one day you wanted to do it? So, a lot of it's that, and probably ten more things like that, okay? There's a Miller's Bayou ordinance there, that's very serious, okay? And I, I can tell you that during two thousand and eight, when the economy was booming, the state legislature passed a law, and it said that, they were trying to promote mooring fields, they passed a pilot program, it's another state law. They, people coming down from New York and the east coast of Florida, parking their boats for long periods of time, gave a very big problem, I think it's a problem now, I have the newspaper articles with me today, starting again because money's getting better and real estate's getting better. They passed that, and from what I see here, it's like, well, here's the mooring law, this is what you should do, but gives, you know, this is what you can do, it's already set in state law. No, that state law gives us the ability to regulate outside of the mooring field. My concern then, and I said this is the most serious thing in this city, was that mooring ordinance. I spent ten hours writing that mooring ordinance. It's a very serious matter, and the days that are in there are reflective of case law that came down. I am concerned that someone's going to tow in twenty houseboats, live on one of them, rent the others out, the Miller's Bayou, every hour, he'll take a John boat over to Nick's Park, okay? That happens, I can't stop him, I can't pass the ordinance again, okay? The pilot program's been extended, the four cities involved in the pilot program have taken their ordinances for review before the state, okay? So, I guess my point is, these are serious matters, okay? And so, I need to go over every line of that. It will take months. It's because we've created the plane, and you want me to reverse engineer it. Normally, you would sit down and say, okay, these are the things we'd like to see changed, and why, let me do it. Now, it's a reverse engineer, it'll take ten times longer than if I was building the Does that answer your question?
Well, it tells me that we need to hire you full-time?
Well, it doesn't mean hire you full-time, that it's just that this is probably not a good way to proceed.
To do it backwards?
Yeah, in other words, to come in with an ordinance and say, I want to pass this, all this time that was wasted. Do you understand what I mean? Like, if these are the issues, then bring them forward, and let's do it right the first time, then go backwards. Well, not with me. I'm sorry. With Mr. Public? I'm sorry to hear that, you know?
I mean, this is the...
You want to bring her to the mic?
This is twenty sixteen?
Come on up.
Come, come up, yeah, say your name, Jim.
Jennifer Jordan, Port Authority Board, forty-nine oh nine Waterside Drive. I just want to reiterate that our workshops for Port Authority Board to get these, these charters updated, we did forty-four, twenty for Parks and Recreation, for what actually applies to the waterways, and ten, Piers, Docks, and Other Marine Structures. We put this all together back in June of twenty sixteen, and July of twenty sixteen, and Mr. Mossad had, I think, boldly just left us at that point. So, we went through this all line by line, we've already made a suggestion to city council in a previous meeting, Carl came up and presented all of what we had done as a document, and then gave highlights of, we think this is what will need to be stricken, changed, so on and so forth. I believe that was on September thirteenth of twenty sixteen that he presented this information to city council. We are just now following back up with this to make sure that something comes of our hard work, because we spent a long time doing this. But I can assure you, if we only took two months to go through this line by line with our combined knowledge to look over city, state, and federal regulations, and track each one of these references back, that you can do it too. This is done in our spare time as well.
And I understand totally that you guys, you work very hard, you don't, you work very hard.
Can I come up? I appreciate that, I apologize if it sounds like I was being critical, I guess my point was, my predecessor, city attorney normally would do this, in other words, we have an ordinance here that someone's asked me to look at. I'm not commenting on the work or the content of it. So, I have to go back now and each line, go back and explain to the council, just like I did with the Miller's Bayou and the other issue here, why we not want to do those, and then go back to the essence of some of the narrative there for changes, that, believe me, whether you change it or not, I don't want to get in the middle of policy, okay? But probably would have been easier on you if the city attorney had, probably Mr. Public done this collectively, is what I'm saying. Do you understand what I mean? It's kind of like we committed an ordinance, you know? I could have sat here for hours and chopped away at each one of this, we can't do it this way. But, so, I guess what I'm answering is, I wasn't criticizing you, I'm saying this could take me a long time.
Well, I'm...
Because I wasn't involved in the beginning, it saw the progression, which is fine, you understand what I mean? Which is fine.
Right, and I certainly encourage...
So, it's not going to happen in a few, few weeks, you know, unless I just work full-time, you know?
But this happens with any change that we're going to make to code and review.
There's actually some good ideas in terms of the idle speed and stuff that need to be played up, but there are, not like Patreon.
Well, certainly, I'm sure that a lot of the work will go to something good to help you, and then as you go forward, we'll get this part done.
Yeah, what will happen is discretionary policy issues, we'll put, I'll put before you. I'm not going to make any decision if it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm just talking about all the other mechanical issues that are here, and understanding, in other words, just, things aren't redundant, they're there for a purpose to be redundant.
Well, my thought is, this is a good idea, and they did a, probably did a very good job, and we, we'll just have to go around it the way we do. Now, in the future, if we want a border committee or...
And with the city manager's input and the attorney's input, personally, I felt, with my big mouth, I'm going to say it, they were there, they should have let us decide, tried to make changes, and then step in to tell us where we did wrong, not as we were going, well, you know, you can't, no. Let the charter committee work on it, they're sitting right there, and then say, well, this is what we came up with, and then take that and have the city manager and the city attorney work with us on it. So, that's my opinion.
It's just that, you know, I...
But if you're going to have another charter committee, I would like to be on that.
I appreciate the work, I know I've been on the committees, I appreciate the work they do, and I don't want them to work in vain or spend hours and hours believing that they were making progress, and find after the fact they're not. I'd like to set up a system where we work better together and make sure, as Doc said, things, the atmosphere was different.
Jerry, you have to understand, a lot of things, like you're going to take a charter, or you're going to take code enforcement, that takes a lot of time, and that should not be rushed. That should go one, you know, one thing at a time, and put the time that is necessary into it, and blend with the attorney and with the city manager and the whole committee. And everybody has to kind of be working for one goal. That's the only way it's going to be done, where you'll get the mass improvements. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, we do have a participating attorney at this point, which I don't know that we always did. Jim, maybe you could go over and say, it starts like this, we have a problem, or some citizens have a problem with the charter, the code, whatever, bring it to me, and then...
It can be done, it's, it, it can be done, Mayor, it's a matter of communication.
I just don't want good citizens to spend a lot of time, and we, we directed them incorrectly.
But I guess, you know, I'm just telling you that, I'm going to review every line of that, that will be a substantial amount of time, six weeks, I'll spend, I've worked seven hours a week now, and I'll double that for the next four or five weeks, and I don't think I'll be done. I mean, I could just say, no, yes, no, yes, but you're going to want to see it, right?
We want it right, and that's the way you normally do things.
Yeah, so, we'll get it right, it's just that, you know, this, we can do this easier, I guess that was my point, we can do this easier, okay?
Well, my point about bringing the whole thing up is because there are a lot of people think that you can just, you know, mail in a request to change a charter and it gets done and that just doesn't happen. I mean, and what I'm trying to explain to the people and the residents that I hope are watching this is that it is a complicated process. If you see a problem with something, bring it up. Maybe we can change something or maybe we can move forward on it. And Mrs. Spaldy brought up one of her own on the boats and the boathouses and the boats in front of people's homes when they're building docks and things like that. We are a boating community. This is something that she finds is something we should probably address. We have to know the process that we have to go through to get it done correctly and how much it's going to cost us in the long run, which it sounds like...
I think we're all in agreement. We just need a protocol, do it more expeditiously next time.
Correct, yeah. I'm here to help with anyone who wants to do that. But at the end of it, obviously, the long process.
So, if there are citizens out there that have something that want to be done, bring it to our attention and let's see if we can move forward. We have to do it the right way.
And, I think we have one citizen...
Mr. Lee, I've got him on my mind. Come up, say your name and address.
Blaine Lee, 5713 Berlin. I'd like to, I have to, I have to address you, Mr. Mayor, but it's a concern to comment that the city manager just made about the city doing things the right way. I'd like to comment on the enclosures around the dumpsters at the firehouse. There's a green paper recycled dumpster there and a regular garbage dumpster. They were both, I noticed today, it was the first time I've been there in a while, that they have fences around them now, nice vinyl fencing. But his remark is, was that we are doing things the right way. According to codes or ordinances, the dumpsters are supposed to be on a cement slab. And, sorry to say, I would estimate that the doors on those two dumps, enclosures, will be ripped off within a month because they're just scraping on the ground. They don't stay open. They don't stay closed. They don't, you can't even hardly close them anymore to lock them.
You don't want the dumpsters around the DMN side? Around the dredging side or...
Fire station.
Fire station only, okay.
At the fire station.
Okay. Ms. LuPo?
Chris?
Chris?
We're not finished with them yet.
Okay, so you're in process of getting there?
Yeah, we were just trying to set an example in the city. It's supposed to be done. We tried to work as fast as we could to, we also wanted to complete the one in the parking lot. But we just, we're kind of behind.
I know you're working fast, but thank you, Mr. Lee. And I think you'll see that corrected. I do want to say thanks to all of them. Mr. LuPo, maybe. There is no smell over there that I can, that my big nose can find.
No, it's all locked up in the jar. No, I go by it every day. I've stopped on several occasions and I have not noticed any smell, which I think we're very fortunate with.
Everything's going well there. Let's see, one last thing I wanted to ask, I guess, one of the three ladies here. Do we have a train, the council has to do another training every how long and when we do? Jackie, that's probably under your purview. Remember the four-hour watch...
Are you referring to the ethics training that's required by the state?
I don't know whatever.
I believe that's, yeah.
I thought Tammy said it had to be done by December or something like that.
I'll look into it and send you a notification as to the requirements.
Okay, appreciate it.
One last thing I'd like to cover is we are currently without a fire chief.
Yes, sir.
How soon are we going to replace him as, you know, we went through the charter and it's very, very definite, we have to have a fire chief. We don't have that option.
Yes, sir. I have a meeting coming up, in fact, tomorrow, to discuss that and among several other issues concerning personnel. I also have a meeting coming up with the county fire chief, discuss certain issues concerning that. But that's a decision that's in process right now, sir.
Any other thoughts? Bill, I got email, I guess through you or anyway, about Whiskey Joe's as far as the boardwalk part. If I remember correctly, we had told them that they did not have to construct that because we weren't sure where the hike and bike trail was going to go. And if it were going to be along that route, then we'd just as soon have them not reduplicate the efforts. But I don't know if I'm, I'm kind of in the end of that whole conversation.
Oh, that's, that's, is this working?
Yeah.
That's fine. We need sidewalks down there, so that's what this was. We'll resolve it. But how we do the bike and hike trail is still, we're not quite there yet, but it's all part of it. By the time Whiskey Joe's opens, we should have this resolved as far as where we're going with things.
Okay, so...
But we do need the sidewalks there, so...
Is your thought that the sidewalk and the bike path is the same thing or will be part of the same thing or two different?
It depends. We haven't gotten there yet. We're close.
Okay. I'll come by and tell you what I know about that. Any other thoughts, comments or...
The hike and bike trail on the north end's almost done, right?
No, not quite. In fact, we're doing some research with part of it. And there's a roadway that we're talking about, coming back to council with. And it's part of that roadway is an extension of the hike and bike trail. But that's something we can very, in the very near future, back to council.
Terry, I can tell you, the MPO, which I dread going to, but it is a good committee. It's just too far away. I believe that we will be able to move this, the, under the US 19 forward quite speedily. But we'll have to do some looking and I'm sure Bill's up to that.
I'm ready.
Okay? Any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
That was the one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.